Okay, we ready? So, I call the work session of the City of Oregon City Commission to order for Tuesday, May 12th, 2015. You want to call the roll?
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here.
Does anybody have any future agenda items?
I don't know if it's time yet. I would like to talk about the urban renewal property by McDonald's at some point, so...
That would be an urban renewal.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to go same.
But I'm sure Mr. Frazier is making a note of that.
Yes.
And I suppose, at some point, for the city commission, we need to talk about the Buena Vista House.
Yes, the status of and the plans for that.
What the disposition is going to be. Okay, so let's move on to discussion items. Three A is 15-283 Glen Oak Park and Filbert Run Park master plans. Mr. Archer?
Thank you, Mayor Holliday and city commissioners. The city owns two properties that were acquired several years ago at this point to fulfill needs for parks in underserved areas as identified by our city's Parks and Rec master plan. These two properties are commonly referred to as Glen Oak Park and Filbert Run Park. That's the name of those for now, just kind of geographically identified. We may or may not end up changing the names of those later. Last year, the city contracted with Lango Hansen Landscape Architects to consult and assist the city in a master planning and design process for these two currently undeveloped park sites. The process took place over the last several months. It was, there was extensive public outreach and public involvement in this process as we do with any park design projects. The City Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, PRAC, reviewed this throughout the process and they unanimously passed a motion supporting the preferred concept plan for each park, which is going to be presented to you tonight. So, the purpose of this item tonight is to update and inform you about that process and then present our final, what we're calling our preferred concept plan. So, at this time, what I'd like to do is call up Kurt Lango. Again, Kurt is with Lango Hansen Landscape Architects. Kurt is our lead consultant. And Kurt is going to give you a brief presentation. It'll be on your video screens and we'll walk through the, what we've defined as our preferred master plans for each site. Kurt?
Thank you, Scott. Well, I'd like to say that it was an honor to be involved in both the park and master planning effort. As Scott mentioned, we had a very open and interactive public process. We were really pleased by the turnout. We probably had 30 to 40 participants at each of the three meetings where we started out talking about vision for the parks. We discussed different options and then we kind of honed into the final master plan, which I'll share with you today. I'll go through first Glen Oak and then Filbert Run and feel free to ask any questions that you have as I go through the presentation. I'm sure all of you are familiar where Glen Oak Park is. It's right next to the high school. And as part of our kind of initial analysis, we took a look at the lay of the land and actually, there's a fairly good grade drop from one side of the park to the other, about almost 30 feet. There's a wetland in the park and as you've driven by, you've probably seen that kind of wonderful oak grove that's in the middle of the park. There's also two residences, one down in the south area here, and then there's one up towards the north. There is some improvements that will be coming. The future school district bus barn is to the north and as part of that, there will be a future Myers Road extension along here. And as part of our master plan, we'll also be improving High School Avenue and a little bit of Glen Oak Road as well. So certainly, this shows that the slopes on the site, you can see that it kind of ranges in terms of the slopes throughout. And that's something that really kind of factored into the master plan that we ultimately developed. And this really took a lot of cues from the neighbors and the citizens in terms of what they wanted for the park. And I think they wanted to keep a lot of the kind of pastoral elements, a lot of the natural elements, but at the same time, they wanted to see some open, flexible areas. So, what you see beginning in the north area park is a small parking lot for about 24 spaces. We'll also have parking along Myers Road and then also along High School Avenue as well. And then there's a really nice kind of path system that kind of winds through the park, which is kind of shown in the kind of white color right here. One that loops around this kind of open, kind of grass area along with a shelter and a restroom. Where the oak groves are, these are the actual trees where you see these smaller circles right in there. There you see a children's playground nestled in there and people wanted to see more of a kind of a nature play, more of a natural playground for that area. And then as you make your way south in the park, where the blue is, where the wetland is, and there's a small little Caulfield Creek that kind of runs through it now, is a small loop trail with a boardwalk system that kind of raises above the wetlands. So, we'll be introducing new native plants in that area and really throughout the park as well. So, that's the more kind of natural side, but at the same time, there was an interest in having some more kind of active components, which we're locating kind of next to or closer to the high school and the fields that are over there. And that would include basketball courts, maybe a small skate, skateboard spot area. Pickleball was something that was mentioned by a number of people.
What is pickleball?
What is pickleball? Well, I would say it's a cross between table tennis and regular tennis. It's actually, it's becoming more and more popular now. It's almost like a smaller sized tennis court. It has a net, it has a kind of lighter weight ball, a smaller paddle, and people of all ages play it, but it's really commonly played by elderly people because it's a lot easier on the joints. And so, we had a pickleball contingent. There's an active pickleball club locally and so, we're showing it right now. And that's really kind of a good point because this is a master plan and it, you know, even though we have all the elements kind of arranged here, when it is time for construction, you know, some of these uses or smaller changes may happen in terms of actual uses. We're also keeping the residence, which is down in this location. There was a lot of discussion about potential uses, collaboration with the high school perhaps, where they could have different classrooms right out in front of the wetland, great for biology department or other kind of learning activities. Also perhaps for the local neighbors as a meeting places as well. So currently, we're showing, keeping that with a small parking area.
So, is there going to be, sorry Carol, is there going to be parallel parking along High School Avenue?
Yes, yeah. We will be expanding the road, a new sidewalk that will go along High School Road and then parking all along our site. Also, a little bit of parking along South Glen Oak Road as well.
Okay.
What is the pump track?
A pump track. A pump track is, you see them made out of wood sometimes. This one is out of concrete and it's basically a track that kind of goes up and down for kids on BMX bikes. And the pump is, they paddle in the very beginning and then they use their own kind of centrifugal force to ride the track without pedaling. So, new trees throughout and a balance of grass and natural areas. And this was not only shown as part of the final meeting with the neighbors, but it was also shown and approved by PRAC as well.
So, I do see, it seems to have a dearth of places to sit. I only see one picnic table. Am I missing something?
The picnic tables are these little round circles right here. So, there's one here, one there, and you're...
And three down here at the bottom right?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I think that when it comes time to kind of refine the plans, I think certainly picnic tables are really important. We'd also probably put them under the shelter as well, so that would be another location.
Okay.
So, that is Glen Oak Park and these are just a couple images of kind of the open grass areas. Oh, and I'm sorry, one thing I forgot to mention, which was fairly important, was the fenced-in off-leash area as a dog park. That was something that we've heard from many people about the desire to have something like that and certainly here, we have the space to do that.
Kurt, so, Kenny, we've been discussing the maintenance issues that we have with our existing parks. And I'm kind of looking at this and I guess I'm going to ask Scott what your thoughts are here, especially having a residence there that's a structure that's going to, as a typical house residence that, of course, I mean, it's going to be a lab or something with the school, but that's going to need maintenance and stuff. So, what are your thoughts on this project here?
Well, I was going to talk about that after Kurt was done, so you kind of jumped ahead for me, but I appreciate the question. We, and we'll talk about this in reference to both of these parks that we're covering. So, where we're at right now is, this is simply designing the vision for these parks, you know, with the community helping us to do that and the neighbors. And then, the next step would be to sort of begin to plan. Once we've got a kind of a target or a bullseye to look at, then we start to look at being able to both fund the development of the park and we don't want to build it until we can take care of it. So, we do look at the maintenance aspects. The design incorporates discussions with our, you know, with our maintenance folks and also, we look at those types of things. But we don't want to, we don't want to be, we don't want to develop these parks until we're prepared to appropriately take care of them. What that exactly means, we're still kind of working through. As you know, Commissioner Shaw, we've been talking about some solutions for improving our maintenance situation. We do have an additional, some additional funding in the budget this year with some revenue from the new right-of-way fees, if that's approved as anticipated. And we've also added one more full-time person to help us out, but that's kind of like just catching up where we're already at. So, getting, moving ahead is kind of the big question that ones out there for us. So, and it's a balance because we know that we've got neighbors, we hear from the neighbors of both of these parks that we're talking about, they would love to have these built a long time ago. They've been on the plan, you know, on the master plan as identified need for quite a few years. So, it's kind of a balancing of not moving too quickly, but also considering that we've got quite a bit of pressure from our community to build these facilities because those areas are underserved and that's why we're talking about them.
Commissioner, I might add one thing, as you know from our discussions on this topic in the retreat, we really only have a couple of options to fund the liabilities in our parks right now and also to fund properly new parks like this one. So, if we build them, we want to keep them nice and take care of them and not continue to do what we have historically done here, which is not maintain the things we already have. So, I think we are looking at some sort of tax increase or some sort of utility fee, but that discussion could be accelerated if, for example, we had a grant that would construct this. Then we might be looking at some sort of a grant to build it, but then we'd have to have one of these other options for the maintenance piece. And that could make the argument, I think, more compelling if we had that kind of a grant opportunity, which certainly, I think, accelerate the conversation among yourselves and probably within the community because...
Is there some opportunity out there now that you're thinking about or?
Well, I think that's how we built the last park. We had this plan, we had a plan and Scott drove to Bend at four in the morning and got there in time to argue his case.
With Kurt, he was hopeful, yeah. Yes, there are, there's competitive state funds that we apply for, for, we've done so with multiple park projects. Usually, those fund about half of the project and then we fund the rest of it with our SDCs. And we do have some SDCs available. We've been kind of saving up for a few years because the last park that we opened was Kanema Children's Park and that's been going on a few years ago now. We've been very successful and actually, Mr. Lango, as it turns out, has helped us write some of those grants and he's batting a thousand for the city. I think he's three for three or four for four on getting those grants. So, we do have definitely the ability to go after those grant funds. We've been fortunate in the past. That's no guarantee of the future, but we would hope so. But we can't do anything until we have a vision and a master plan for the park that says, this is what it is and this is what we think it's going to cost to build it and this is why we're building it. So, this is kind of that first major step towards getting that done.
Okay. Carol?
Yes, you have to have a plan before you get funding. So, this plan is great. I am struck by this plan and how much you were able to get into this park. It is amazing. So, I can see you really listened to the public input and this location is really central to a lot of, to a lot of housing developments with young families. So, and I see all different ages being represented in this plan and how you also have natural spaces and native species. It seems like everything's in this park. I don't know how you did it. And there seems to be a pretty good thought on parking too, which I think is important.
Yeah, definitely. And I think it's actually nice that we're able to use the on-street parking so we don't have to have a really large parking lot in the park. And I know there's been discussions with the district as well in terms of shared parking. So, yes.
So, as far as the existing house goes, do you see a partnership with the school for the maintenance of that house and the use of that house or do you think it will only be a part of the park?
Good question, but we don't know the answer yet. And that's, I think Kurt alluded to this a little bit, is that we are, as of now, we're showing it remaining and we're talking about the house that's on the south, the bottom part. The one on the top, because of Myers, is going to go away. The potential is definitely there to find some interesting ways to utilize that as a community building. We did talk to the school. In fact, we had two of our three public meetings out at, or one of them was in the, or two of them were in the high school and one was at the park right by the high school. And there seemed to be definitely some interest there, you know, our construction class that we've been so successful in working with, that wonderful program. So, I'm not sure about the maintenance, but definitely there was interest in looking at programming, but I would think that that would be kind of a natural part of it is that we would, if we develop that kind of relationship, that we'd also look at developing those types of opportunities.
And one last real quick question. As far as Myers Road extension, do you see that needing to happen first before the park is developed or how is the timing in that?
Good question. John and I were just talking about that today and I'll probably let him talk to most of that, but I would just say that our requirement will be to build the part of the road on our side of the, on our side of the property. The school district is working on their thing. Then we've also got this concurrent planning process that is going on that, John, I'll let you kind of pick it up from there. That's a loaded question right now.
It's a little bit loaded, but I think the Myers Road extension would be a condition of development of this park. So, the school district's having a condition. We're hopeful that we can get at least curb-to-curb build of that section of Myers Road, but just like High School Lane and just like the improvements on South Glen Oak Road, there would be conditions of approval for the development of the park.
And I would just add, Commissioner, that we're also, I've been in the Myers Road planning meetings, but I've also been in some of the school district meetings where we've met with their development team on their project that we're talking about options of how we might build out the full road even before the park gets built because that, the school district project is quite a ways ahead of ours. And we would maybe benefit from getting the entire road built up front even though there's no park yet. So, we're looking at those kind of things and if anything materializes, we'd be bringing some type of an agreement back to you to talk about.
Okay.
So, just a reminder that we do have, we're talking about two park plans and Kurt still needs to go through. I just want to remind you of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I was at several of those open houses for both parks, but this Glen Oak Park was one that definitely a lot of people were at, I think, both open houses. But when I was at, at least the first one, there was so many, so many uses of the park that were thrown out there and I think almost all of them are in there, which I'm just, you know, amazed by because it is such of, this is going to be an amazing park if we follow through on this in the future. But in terms of the house, I, one of the things, you know, and I think I even spoke about the hopes to keep the house in the future and mainly because of the connection with the high school. I think with the construction class, the high school, you know, being able to possibly work on helping, you know, restore, you know, renovate the house or who knows what with that. But I could see, you know, science classes using that area. I could see art classes using that area to go out and draw. I mean, it's, some of the classes sometimes take walks over to the college and various places, but then we have a little bit of issues with college students and high school students mingling and things happening, but, so I think there's cool possibilities for using that house. And then again, it might have just be a satellite office for our school resource officer.
Well, and that was one thing I was about to get to. My son being one of those kids. I assume we took into account the possibilities of that, the high school population and the proximity of the park and things about maintenance and all of those kinds of issues.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a huge topic. I mean, it will be, because I think students will definitely go over there and so that'll be...
A very convenient hiding place.
Right, right. So, I think that's, you know, a conversation that, you know, the school district and our school resource officer and the city will have to talk about how that, how that works because it definitely will be, especially if there's, you know, area for skating and basketball and other things, there definitely would be...
It'll be a very popular and attractive location for the high school kids, which is good on some levels, but on other levels, there might be some potential concerns and we'll, we're going to continue to work forward with the school and we'll stay in close contact as we move forward. So, again, we're just talking big picture concept. As we move towards development and we get into some of those more finite details of how we're going to design it, then we would probably talk about, you know, do we put fencing in certain areas, do we not? Do we do other types of things? So, those are great points and we'll consider those.
I also want to mention that if we happen to be successful and find a way to find construction funding for this by, with a match and a grant together, again, I believe that will accelerate the conversation. But one of the things I'll be asking the director to do is an analysis, much like the one you saw with CSafe, where we look at, okay, what would it cost on the tax levy to mitigate the deferred maintenance liabilities that we have in our parks and to keep this one from getting on that list eventually? And then comparing that to what it would cost to do the same thing with a fee because the deferred maintenance that he's looking at is significant for his department, but if you look at it compared to the price of a new public safety building, it's very, very small. So, it would be a relatively small adjustment to really be able to fix this problem long term. So, it could be worth it if you're looking at an opportunity to benefit from that grant, if it's a significant amount.
Okay. So, moving on.
Okay. So, the, let's see, just a couple of the images of Glen Oak Park, potential play...
Make sure that pump track that was on that last slide real quick, up above previous to that one. There you go. Because there was a question about that and the pickleball.
Right, right in here where the kids kind of ride their bike all around there.
And then there's a pickleball court right next to it.
Oh, pickleball, right, right there. So, you can see pickleball in action. So, Filbert Run Park, Glen Oak was about nine acres and Filbert Run is three and a half acres. And I think what's really kind of interesting about Filbert Run is that in some ways, it's being used as an open space by neighbors right now. They certainly, over the years, have taken upon themselves to their credit to clean up the park, to remove a lot of the understory and brush. And so, certainly, there's a lot of vested interest, there has been, about what happens in the park. There's almost two sites to the park. One is on the left-hand side is an existing kind of woodland canopy and then on the other side, a small little drainage way that divides it, is an open space, which is being used right now. And so, in some ways, this was an exercise in kind of a light touch, but it was, I think, a very important one because there are no pathways or benches in the park right now. And so, what we did is we, the very first meeting was actually out on the site and I think it all helped us kind of visualize what the park could become. Just a series of simple pathways that kind of moved through the park, moved under the understory, so kind of moved through that really kind of wonderful kind of woodland. There is a shelter located kind of in the center of the park where there's kind of a clearing, a natural clearing in the woods. And I think in looking at the existing trees, almost all of them are very healthy, so we're keeping almost every single one of them, which is another thing that the neighbors really wanted. We also have a play area, which is kind of located in this area here. What I think the neighbors really wanted to see again was something very kind of natural, something that kind of blended in to the woodland. Here, we're showing a couple small bridges that kind of span this little kind of drainage way right in here with some kind of natural planting as well. These are some little, small kind of natural climbing structures.
So, that's not actually a creek?
It gets wet during, well, during the winter time, there is some water in it, but, and then certainly during the summer months, it dries up. So, it's really more of a kind of intermittent drainage way rather than a creek itself. And so, that will still be maintained. Over here in this side, we're actually filling it in just a little bit to get a little bit more of a gracious entry coming off of this street. Connections to an existing pedestrian pathway, so connections to the neighborhood was very important. And then really just kind of maintaining this kind of nice kind of open lawn over in this area for kind of frisbee throwing, picnicking. And then over in this area, more of an eco lawn, something that doesn't need to be mown very much. And just picking up just briefly on the maintenance aspect, we did meet with the city's maintenance staff and went through each plan as we developed it. So, it wasn't, we developed it, then shared it. So, they had comments all along the way. So, that was very important for us from the very beginning. So, very, very natural and I think this was again, something that the neighbors were very pleased with.
Questions?
It just, here's just a couple image of kind of the natural areas, little climbing or kind of crawl tubes, some of that kind of natural native planting, small bridge, shelters. Certainly, I think there's been a history of having the high school students build a lot of the structures in the park and we certainly see that happening here as well. Thank you.
Is there any parking? I didn't see any parking around there.
No, there isn't. So, these are all existing street. There is on-street parking right now and usually with a neighborhood park this size, we don't provide parking within the park. It's really meant more for neighbors to walk to rather than being more of a, kind of a regional attraction, which is a little bit different than Glen Oak Park. And also, once you begin to put parking in there, then it really takes up, ends up taking up a lot of space.
Yeah, my concern is people will drive there. There are people that will drive there that will like certain things about the park and then there's that conflict there with the neighbors if there's no parking, so.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I think we felt, that is a good point. For the most part, you'll find the majority of the users are going to be the local neighbors are going to walk or bike and there will certainly be people that will drive to any of our parks. In this case, as Kurt said, all along Hazel Nut and some of those kind of spur streets and then Westwood on the bottom of the map, that kind of is a connector point into that southern part of the neighborhood. There is extensive on-street parking that we felt, you know, even on the front edge or very close by, that would probably more than adequately account for any cars that would want to park. So, I think, I think we're very comfortable with the available street parking.
Is that a quarter-mile loop or do you know how that loop is?
The loop right in here, I think it's less than a quarter mile. I think it might be like an eighth of a mile.
We would, when we build the park, we would put up a sign that says, you know, this many lapses a mile or whatever, that kind of thing, probably those types of things we like to use, so, yeah.
So, I'm, I take Carol's point. I think at least in the plan, we ought to think about reserving some space that we can give... can convert to off-street parking if it becomes an issue. So, maybe in this upper corner, you know, we could do what, what you're doing now, but if we wanna have a fallback in case, you know, in case on, off-street parking, or on-street parking is becoming a nuisance or a problem in the neighborhood, so I'm just, that's just a suggestion.
Because with the loop path, you are, you are gonna have people, I think, drive there to walk that loop path. Our paths get used a lot. They're a great part of our community.
And I live across the street from, I forget the name of the park, goes between Holmes Lane and Mountain View, and there are people constantly driving up and dragging out their dogs and letting the dogs run in the park, which is fine, it's never been a problem, but, you know, if you have other things that are attractive, because really that park there is just one big open grassy field. But when you have other things that are going on in this park, it's gonna attract more people, and I, so I think, you know, there's, I, I think there's maybe a potential issue of parking. Anything else? Okay, is that it?
Yeah, I just wanna, just kind of in closing, as, as sort of a, where we're at in the process and where we're going, first of all, I want to acknowledge and thank Kurt and his firm. They are fantastic to work with. They've done a number of our park projects in the city, both development and also taking it through, or design and taking us through development. They've actually won some awards through the Oregon State Parks and Recreation Association for our parks, and, so they, they've done an excellent job. And once again, I think Kurt and his team did a fantastic job of hearing what our community wanted in these sites, and getting them into those sites. I think you made that comment, Commissioner Smith, and also Commissioner Polly, about how many things we managed to get into, some of the things that were desired, and, and that's, a lot of credit to Kurt. And also, our community for coming out and participating. We had great participation, and that's really important, because we want these to reflect what the community wants. So, so going forward, what we have basically are, these are, these are the visions for the park, and we would then intend to develop an idea of when, a schedule of when we, when and how we could fund the development, and also considering all those maintenance issues and things, things that we talked about, the comments that Mr. Fraser made, and some of those types of ideas that we're, we're working towards. So, we take what we have here, and we begin to work forward with that, and, and then at the appropriate time, we'd be back to, to discuss that further with the commission. So, that, really, our next steps then would be, at some point, bringing back a development plan for these sites. So, we thank you for the good questions and the input.
Thank you.
Thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you.
So, onward and upward, 3B, 15-254, replacement of the 800 megahertz public safety analog communication systems. Mr. Ban.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. I'm gonna, so there's two groups that, two boards that, that I'm on that relate to public safety communication. You probably heard the term CCOM, and basically what that is, that's the, are dispatchers who dispatch calls, they answer phone calls, and then dispatch our troops. The other group is C800, and C800 basically is the infrastructure on which that communication takes place. And, and I'm gonna not say really anything else beyond that for right now. I'm just gonna introduce John Hartzok, who's a project manager that is hired by C800, and he is going to talk about a pending replacement of all that infrastructure, and then I'll say some stuff after that, and I'm sure you'll have some questions.
Mr. Hartzok, welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to share with you this project that we've been working on for probably the last five years. Okay, let me use this one. Ah, there we go. As Chief Ban mentioned, what this is, is the replacement of the current county-wide public safety analog radio system. Age of it, it's a little over 15 years old, the technology is about 20 years old. Our current thinking, excuse me, is voter, voter approval of a 10-year general obligation bond, and we're actually doing some studies, I'll talk about that a little bit later, of looking at potentially a little longer period. I originally was really thinking, because of this technology, that, that 10 years seemed right, because of how quickly it all changes. However, the bulk of the assets in this are greater, almost 75% of them are greater than than 15 years. So, I think it's worth looking at, because that would obviously help with the rate. We want to determine, the other, of course, would be to do it the way we did it last time, your members of C800, your partners, and each agency paid their own piece of it last time. So, that's another way of doing it, that's not a very popular one, obviously. When? We want to determine the financing by 2016, where, as I'll talk about here in a couple of seconds, we're, we're really running out of time on this existing system, because we want to really target completion by January of 19. And it, it takes about three years to build out one of these systems. As Chief mentioned, C800, Clackamas 800 Radio Group, was formed about 15 years ago when we put this system in. It is an ORS 190, joint venture between all of the public safety agencies in the county. I manage it, was, been a part of it since its inception, and it owns and operates the public safety radio system here in Clackamas County. So, whose issue? This came from our chair, who this year is Leslie Taylor, who is the manager at Locom. She is the, like a Swigel representative on the end, she's the board chair this year. But it's not a police, it's not a fire issue, it isn't a city or county issue, it's really a public safety issue for all the citizens. It isn't the individual subscriber, what we call subscriber radios, portables, mobiles, those are really an, we, we, the board has come to a decision that that's an agency responsibility, and those are gonna have to be upgraded too. But the infrastructure is really a, a county-wide issue, and it's actually, in our case, it's a partnership with Washington County. We, the two systems are tied together, and it's a partnership. Excuse me. It's really is, as Leslie said, it's the, it is the core of a strong unified public safety response. System replacement goals are improved performance, replace existing equipment with scalable and upgradable digital technologies, reduce the single-point-of-failure problem. And we're doing a standards-based communication system. ABCO, which is the Association of Public Safety Communications Officers, developed a standard, it's been, it's been pretty well adopted nationwide, called P25, digital standard, but it is standards-based, so that we're not locked into any one vendor for our equipment. It isn't necessarily Motorola, isn't necessarily Harris, it can be a number of different, different vendors. Interconnect, the C800 WACA system, WACA is Washington County Consolidated Communications, with other adjacent systems, which we are today. We do think that we'd wanna, because of the size of this issue, that we want to appoint a citizens committee to review and stay in tune with us as we're doing it, and then operations would continue to be funded as, as they are today. Age is the issue, as I said. I keep forgetting to get one of those gray, old gray Motorola original cell phones.
Brick phone.
Brick phone.
Good to call me, I would've brought mine.
Well, and how many people still have it or using those? You have ones.
I have one, I'm not using it.
But that's really kind of the comparison of thinking of it. I think it also could be interesting, it could be in a meeting like this, and there might be people that don't know what that is when they see it, because it's, it's been a while. It's becoming dire. We really have to turn on a lot of the parts and pieces to the secondary markets. We're going to eBay, we're going to resellers to find parts to keep the system up. It averages about 40,000 calls a day, so it's, the system is busy. Spectrum efficiency, we often, or I'm often asked, well, are we being mandated to do this? Sometimes that's the easier thing to say, well, we're being forced to do it. Well, the FCC kind of got smart in that issue, and we're tired of, in essence, mandating things, and then people complaining about, you know, where's the money for the mandate? What public safety had done across the country is said, we need more spectrum, particularly in the big cities, the Los Angeles, Chicago's, New York's of the world. So, what they did is they said, okay, television, you go to digital. When they did that, they took that spectrum.
Can you define spectrum?
It's the frequency, it's the radio frequency. So, the current ones we're doing are 800 megahertz in the radio frequency spectrum. It's a real pretty little colored chart that shows a spectrum, but it is frequency. The, and when they brought that in, they said, oh, and by the way, it has to be digital, much more efficient. For instance, when we take the system we have today and go digit, full digital with it, we'll be able to have four times as many talk paths than we do today. It, it really is a dramatic improvement, and of course, it was a big thing in those bigger, bigger cities. But it's important to us, too. The other, after 9/11, was the whole issue of interoperability, that we can talk to one another. We are blessed, the system we built 20 years ago, Washington County's was first, and then we did this one, Clark County, Portland's are the same system. We have, in this area, kind of a model for interoperability. Your officers can go into Clark County, way out in Washington County, and still work on the system. That isn't true everywhere else, but we need to maintain that. And with Portland and Clark County already installing their digital systems, at some point, when they go full digital, we'll lose that capability. And that's, it's important for you, in particular, if you get into an issue along 205 or Pursuit or something like that.
Clackamas Town Center.
Clackamas Town Center. It's, it's pretty important. Analog technology we're using today is no longer available, it's, the manufacturers have just moved on to the, just like in everything else that you, that you have around you that's electronic. I talked about ABCO. We have a partnership with us and Washington County. It is also a 190 made up of the agencies in Washington County. We looked initially at creating a vehicle called a communication district. It was actually, the legislation for it was formed down in Umatilla area when they were closing the depot, those counties down there. It's very, very easy to form, but the more we talked about it, the users, the board members on both sides, both WACA and C800, were concerned about another layer of government, how that would be received in the public, so we've kind of backed away. It's a potential, Washington County isn't interested in it, so that means each county will have to put, the district could've put a bond out there for the entire district. Each county, because it's the only vehicle with countywide taxing authority, is why we're talking about the county doing the bond. But actually, we're, C800 is the one that's gotta carry the weight to, to make sure we get it to happen. Grant opportunities, we had about a little over $4 million in the existing system in grants, plus a lot of the agencies got grants to do portable mobile radios. Homeland Security money was free-flowing after 9/11. As a region, if we look at ourselves and say, because all of us had to replace our radio systems, we should've said at that time, gee, let's start putting some money to do that. Instead, the choice by everyone was to go and do other things and other equipment. Those grants now are lot, lower dollar amounts that we're getting, I think we're getting something like $2 million this year, which don't even start to approach a project like this. So, we'll keep trying, but there aren't, just aren't as many out there as there used to be. We looked at a number of options, ranging from 80 million to 34 million, and actually, the original start of this was almost five years ago. We had a federal grant and hired a consultant to look at Portland, or Multnomah County, Clark County, Washington, Washington County, Clackamas County, to really see where the issues were with the problems, where do we need to go. They came back with a solution. Their solution is we should build one system for the four, Eric, four counties. Made some sense, and look at this idea of a district, but Portland felt they really needed to get moving, and so that kind of, everybody then ended up kind of somewhat being on their own. Clark County has done theirs, Portland passed a bond to do theirs, and now Washington, Clackamas really need to move forward. But the system came from that, the basic design came from that, from that study work. It's a total of 14 additional sites. When we built the system originally, we were cash limited, so we built kind of the minimum. Some of the areas, two things happened. One, by going to digital, it doesn't work the same as analog, and if you remember back when we changed from analog cell phones to digital cell phones, an analog phone will kind of work on, it'll get noisy and cracky, but it still worked. Now with digital, digital gets to a point, stops. Much clearer when it's working, but it does stop. So, we have to add almost five sites to make up for that difference. We also need to add sites, the original system was designed for holding the portable up at the head, that's generally not how folks operate, it's on the belt with a speaker mic, so adding sites to accommodate that. And then the other is to add some sites up on the Clackamas Drainage, which you leave Estacada going up the mountain, and in the Lolo Pass, Mount Hood area, to, to really fill out some of those recreational areas that, again, weren't there originally, and there's a fair amount of activity.
Now, are those interconnected via, via copper, or are they microwave?
No, it's all microwave.
Okay.
And those are towers, John?
Yes, sir. Much like, you lease space to us up at Mountain View Water Tank, that's one of our sites in the system.
Yeah, I'm familiar. You ruin my cell coverage every once in a while.
Well, we can have that discussion.
But you're safe.
It, it really, it replaces what we have, but improves it and gets us kind of where we need to be for the next 10 to 15 years. As I said, the drainage, Lolo Pass, but really brings the system up to where we want to be. The other couple of things we're going to, that we've decided, the board decided made sense, is a smartphone application. Great for, like, chief officers, if they're down at Salem, they don't have to have the radio and drag radio traffic, they can have an app on their cellphone and be, be able to, to communicate in the system. It's not a mission-critical type use, because as, again, as we found, as you mentioned, at the town center, the cellphone service goes away pretty quickly when there's a major incident.
So, this is still simplex, though, right?
Oh, no, it's, it's all.
It's full duplex?
It's full duplex.
Okay.
Yes, on the cellphone app, yes.
Oh, but not on?
Not on the radio.
Still on the radio?
It's still simplex, yeah. Replacing the current paging system, that's primarily a fire issue, some, some law agencies use it, but it's notification for fire that's fairly important. Again, it's even older, it's in the 25-year range. Two other things that we're adding is post-warranty support, which is to extend warranty, so that the system is staying updated and repaired, and then system refresh, which is a new option that most of the vendors are offering, which every two years, they come in and refresh software, but also will refresh hardware if in fact it's time to refresh it. So, that keeps us away from being in quite the condition we'd be in 10 years from now, or 15 years from now. So, total cost, somewhere in the $53 million range. As I say, we've looked at a number of options, the board is continuing to discuss it. We've just retained a public research firm to do some, some focus groups, and then we're going to do some polling, so we can hear what do the citizens think about it, and what's their reaction. This is in the 13 to 15 cent range at, at 53 million. If we go 15 years, it's probably in the eight to nine cent range. So, that's, again, one of the things we're going to test when we talk to the public, is what's, what's valuable. So, I'm open for questions?
Well, I, I have a couple, just to start with. Obviously, we can't do anything about technology changing, but we can. Obviously, we can't do anything about technology changing, but we can make sure that the, uh, the hard infrastructure is in place, so that when it comes time in ten or fifteen years to, hopefully, we don't have to totally replace the system again, but we can continually upgrade. So we maintain, you know, our physical plant, and it's just the, the front end, the software that we continue to do that with. I would hope that we would do this. I hate to see things where we just spent, you know, forty, fifty million dollars fifteen years ago to do this, and now we're coming back and doing it again. So as we're building our police station, we, I expect that we're going to be building a building that's going to be good for fifty years. Obviously, a box is different than, than in an electronic system, and I'm, I do this for a living, so I understand, you know, what you're talking about. But I want to make sure that we do it the best way we can. The other thing I would say is that, like we're doing with our, our police station, it would seem to me that you would get a lower cost per household and spread it more fairly if you were to utilize a, a utility fee of some kind rather than a bond.
The question, that, that potentially is true. Uh, I mean, one of the original Washington County system, they did it as a five-year serial levy. Challenge with doing a levy, of course, is the potential of compression, um, the, which has a bigger effect, well, particularly when we were putting this together. Now, it's, it's been a few years, and the compression issue isn't quite as bad as it was. The, the question, though, on the fee is, it's kind of like the county's discussion on this road, what would be the vehicle for charging? And my guess would be each city would kind of have to do their own, and that could get complicated. So it's a thought, though, and that's certainly worth the, the board discussing.
Everybody has water. So every water meter.
Not throughout the county.
Mayor, there are probably people that have cell phones that don't have water. It seems like they have that, if they have nothing else except air to breathe, they have a cellphone.
Well, yeah. Do not get me into that.
There, there are many things to think about.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Questions? No, no?
We have talked about this a little bit at the regional city managers' meetings that are held here, where all the city managers from the county come and talk. We were stunned at the price tag. It's staggering amount of money, for something that most of us, even though we're in the somewhat related fields, don't understand very much about the technical parts of it. Our chief, and I believe the fire chief, have both recommended on the board a lower cost option, and I would like to ask the chief to inform you a little bit about his thinking on that lower cost option.
I do have one more quick question for John. So in most emergencies, this system is infinitely better than landlines or cell phones, because obviously they get overloaded by all, all the other people. However, with microwave, you have the one thing is, that, that could compromise the system is an earthquake. And when you disalign your microwave dishes, all that communications goes away. So what's the secondary route in, in that case?
It's loop-protected microwave, so the microwave, it's a full loop, so it goes both ways, that if you lose the path going to the right, it automatically switches and goes to the left. We have found, over the years, the twenty years of this being up, far greater reliability with the microwave than going to, fiber is certainly a possibility, but it isn't, it hasn't been as reliable. There are, in fact, uh, next week, uh, we're going to be in a situation where they're replacing a link between Washington County and Clackamas County, that, that, but the equipment's really already failing, and that we need to replace it. So we're going to have a day next week, which we're on, on kind of what we call our talk around our backup type system. So there's levels of it decreasing, that they still can talk, can still communicate, isn't quite as wide area, but at least it continues to operate. And there's, there's levels that we can lose the microwave altogether, but yet there's still communication.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
So the, some of the things that, that happen, one of the conversations that's come up is, okay, what if we go out for a bond and it doesn't pass? Then what? And some of the people on the board, ultimately what happened is, everybody on the board kind of voted, and then voted on several options. There were several other things that did not get voted in, some other options, uh, that, that could have been part of the package. There was, but then the significant piece was kind of, in terms of coverage, do we go to, I think the, there was, the cheapest option was probably not quite even as good a coverage as we have right now, a little bit less.
Be about, well, it, the written statement is equal to what you have today. We'd still would have the, the five or six sites to make up for the analog digital.
Up to a, a most expensive option, which, and it basically, for an Oregon city resident, doesn't really change, the most expensive and the least expensive option didn't really change Oregon City much. It, it was more into the, into the further parts of the county that, that John mentioned. And so my concern and the fire chief's concern were, what, what if it doesn't pass, and then we have to pay for this out of our, out of our general fund? What are we going to do then? And making sure that whatever option we went for was something that everybody in the county was going to agree was the best option. And, and I'm not saying I have the answer to this, but what, what does the community think is, is the value of having somewhere up on Lolo Pass have, you know, on the hip coverage? To a deputy working out there occasionally, which they do, um, you know, that's, it's going to, at times be very, very valuable. So, but nonetheless, it's, it's a conversation about what that's worth, because that's, that's a lot of money. Aside from that, the radio is just for our agency, which is not included in this. We just got our quote from a day with six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That's just for the radios for our cars and our officers. The reason I'm, all of this is, the, the big picture issue, I think, the reason all of everything I just said matters is, if this is going to pass, I think that every community has to agree that this is a good plan. And I know that there are some cities who, who, who don't really, they don't like it. And I think it's going to be difficult to pass something like this that is this important when you have some cities opting out and some elected saying, yeah, we don't, we don't, we want to do other things with our money, we're not interested in this. And I don't think you can say that, you can't just pretend that this does not need to be fixed. And, uh, so, but, uh, we're going to keep working our board and, and having these discussions, but my hope is that you guys have an understanding of, you're going to hear about this, talked about more and more and more, and the purpose was to have you understand the need and to hopefully, whatever your opinion is, when you're talking to other elected officials, to kind of help everybody come to a, an agreement that we need to support this with one message so we can get it passed at whatever level.
Just to amplify, the spread between the low-cost option was forty million compared to this, this fifty-three, so.
And fifty-three is the highest cost option?
Fifty-three is the high. And that, and again, if we went fifteen years, that would be eight cents, and if we did forty million, that fifteen years would be about six cents, so.
Mayor, I just want to reiterate, especially with our guest here, it wouldn't be something we'd be taking to our general fund if it didn't pass. If it didn't pass, you're going to have to keep going back and asking voters until you can convince them or keep narrowing down the system, uh, because it's not something that with our existing budget, we could simply can't afford to do it. There would have to be some new significant revenue source, and I think that's why it's key that all these cities that are affected by this, they're going to have to rally behind, and there's going to have to be an incredibly good explanation, because there's some legwork, I will just say, with my fellow city managers, I think, that needs to be done. And they aren't comfortable making recommendations to these folks, which is our jobs, until they're sold on it. And I know that they're all in sticker shock at the moment. So maybe it'll, will get better, but we'll also be looking at other options if it doesn't, if it doesn't pass, and you try and try again. Sometimes that's necessary. But, you know, whatever it takes, we do need the service. And we need to, we're going to have to go digital, we've known this for a long time, all, the world's going digital. So it's, it's just the way it is, but it's, it's pretty technical, and it's a scary number because it's just so darn big.
Commissioner Smith?
Um, I guess the thing that worries me is, the fire department is asking voters for money right now. We're, you know, we're going forward with C safe at some point. I don't know that the general public realizes that these are all separate things. And this is a big piece, that I think most people would say, well, why, why wasn't that talked about with the fire department or the police department in terms of asking, and how that affects? If, if the fire department passes their measure, or they pass theirs, um, you know, does that set this up for failure by saying, well, we already voted to, to support the fire department?
They'll have a truck, they won't have a radio.
The police department, I, I think those three things all together, that's a, that's a lot.
Well, and since eighteen forty-four. You know, we, you know, time marches on, we have to pay for things, you know?
Absolutely.
It just is what it is. I, more than anybody here, understands exactly what we're talking about. I was a microwave satellite communication specialist in the army, so I understand how this stuff works. And it seems to me that, that it's a no-brainer, that if the system we have now, we're having to go to eBay, or, you know, Joe's used electronic parts to find things to fix it, that we don't have a whole lot of time to, you know, to go to replace it. My biggest concern is that if, if we do this, I don't want to be back here fifteen years from now doing it again. So as much of the infrastructure as possibly can be, needs to be usable no matter where we go the next time.
And the sites, the ten sites we have today will be used again, the buildings and towers are all fine. Batteries, they've been out there for fifteen years, it's time to change some of them. Generators getting close, so.
Batteries, batteries are an every-five-year thing.
We've been able to push them.
Hey, John, what, so what happens?
No, I was just going to say, you won't be here in fifteen years because of term limits. You'd be, you'd be safe.
Yeah, but I don't want people coming back to me going, how come you didn't ask these questions?
Well, I will, I will say.
Actually, it's gonna be eight, and then a break, he could be back in fifteen.
I'm not coming back.
All right. It was a decision fifteen years ago, both in Washington County and Clackamas County at the, at the, at the radio boards, at C eight hundred and at WACCA, to not be putting money away, that they didn't want to target, that public safety, it's easy to go to the voters. And that was an attitude fifteen or twenty years ago. That's changed. And I agree with you fully, I think that we have to move forward with a little different approach.
And then do you have, is there, does this agency have revenue beyond bonding?
This agency, ORS one nineties cannot put a bond out. It has to be a city or a county that puts the bond.
Right, but the one ninety, you know, so, so somebody's paying you something.
Oh, the, it's you.
Okay.
You are a member of the one ninety, and you pay, we pay, our formula right now is set up on so much per radio.
Okay.
It's four hundred dollars a year per radio.
And you're not putting, and, and right now, you're not, you don't have any revenue stream to pay for future expansion, upgrade?
There is some minimal capital money in there to do short increment type of things that we have to do. We're doing some microwave stuff next year, and the, and that's in the new bill. But again, it was the board's decision not to do that. I think it'll be different once we get this project on.
Because it seems to me that, you know, David's heard this more times than he'd care to say, but I believe in boiling frog. So you got to add something, you know, every year, every other year, to, to maintain that space, so that you aren't, you know, shocking everybody and coming back and going, I want fifty million dollars, because you can save up. We've saved up almost eight million dollars for our operations center. And we did that by, you know, taking a little bit and putting it aside. And, and I think that's part of why agencies get themselves in trouble, is because they aren't doing those kinds of things. And so when it comes down to it, you know, it's just like, oh, I'm out of money, I got to go ask for more.
John, is, just, i- is there going to be a, a spot, or are there any parts, is there a certain, I know bearings are on word, but where we're going to run out, bro, at what point, when there's nothing on eBay, or, I mean, what happens? Is there ever a day where the radio literally is not working?
If, you may remember hearing it, on April seventeenth, I think it was, Portland had a failure of one of their sites, same age of equipment, same what-have-you, they were out for a day.
Wow.
They had, because they're in the process of building the new seven hundred, they had some coverage, but it was, it was a tough day. And this equipment, because it's simulcast, which means all, when he pushes the radio button to talk, it goes over the entire system. So every site transmits at once, so all of that equipment is, the timing between them and the equipment has to be like. So you lose one site, we have to replace something in all of the sites. And it could be, it could, if it was an emergency, maybe six, eight months, we could have the equipment, and we could have catastrophic failure. Somebody asked the other day, if you were looking at the, you know, the day clock, what time is it? And we think it's in the eleven forty-five to eleven fifty range. It's, we're there. It's two seventeen, two thousand and seventeen, it will no longer be supported, which means no technical assistance, no, um, no ability to keep it running.
And do we have any of our own maintenance people?
Oh, yes, no. We have a staff of five at, at WACCA, that, that they maintain both systems. They do an excellent job. We have glitches, but everyone so far, they've been able to put us right back on the air, so.
Mayor, can I, oh, go ahead.
So by twenty seventeen, those guys pretty much know the thing inside out, backwards and forward. So technical support isn't so, so much as a big deal, it's just having the parts.
Right.
John, do you, have you guys had a chance yet to put very much thought into what kind of public information and public outreach is going to be required to inform people sufficient so they're comfortable voting in favor of something like this?
We're just starting that process. I mean, you, you hit the nail on the head. The first piece of education, as strange as this may seem, is officers and firefighters on the street, that they're supportive of this. When we tried to do a bond in Clackamas County fifteen years ago, that was one of the areas that we had a problem with. They weren't as supportive. So that's one of our pieces. And then, as I say, this, this focus group work we're doing, and then the polling work will help design exactly the process.
Is there any, is there any chance you think that, because, I'm just trying, again, taking the, the temperature of my colleagues, and, and I'm concerned that, that this is probably isn't going to pass if there are cities out there that don't want it. And, and I know none of us want the price tag, but I think if there's some way to accommodate, get those cities on board, so that you kind of have a unanimous front there, it might be worth looking, uh, you know, sharpening the pencil a bit more to try to get them to a place that they could be supportive. And then at some point, your education piece stops, once the county commissioners put this on the ballot. You can educate, but that's, that's it. So there will have to be some sort of a PAC or, or other, I don't know, Friends of Public Orps, or somebody that, that goes out there and helps.
Don't steal our friends.
He's only got three.
I think the police departments have a lot of friends. But it's, it's going to take that kind of a grassroots, citizen-led coalition of voices to.
I'm confused. If the system is going to be broken, and officers or, or firefighters in a particular municipality will not, will not be able to communicate, what is the alternative?
I was equally as confused. I don't know. I, 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 I don't under, I don't know. There's, uh, you know, there, there was one city there intent on building a fire department. And their city said, no, we don't want to do that, we, we want to build a fire department. And, and that's, that.
Well, that's great, I, you know, I think it's great if they want to build a fire department, but what good is it going to do them if they can't communicate with anybody else? I mean, you can't go back to a single city radio system.
I agree with you. Wait, that.
It'd be a bell on a pole.
Well, like Wes Lynn used to have that siren that'd go off, we could hear it, you know, they had a volunteer fire department. So I, you know, it, it's amazing to me that there's anybody out there saying, we wouldn't want to participate in this regionally or countywide.
I just heard the, the number is high, higher than people are convinced is necessary. That's what I've heard so far.
I mean. I mean.
But I guess that's why John's here, right? He's trying to kind of.
Portland Public Schools bond was $454 million, and that was just for facilities. So in the scheme of things, you know, $50 million for a county-wide system that every single citizen, you know, everywhere depends on, doesn't seem unreasonable to me.
So just to kind of.
Sounds like there's some work to do.
Recap. I'm not an electrician, so at some point, my eyes kind of glaze over a little bit. But you, we talked about different choices when you looked at options. And we talked about compatibility and making sure we're compatible with Clark County and that type of thing. So this system that you're looking at, because it is digital, is compatible with every other system.
It's, we're, what's being proposed is the AppCo Project 25. There are some other systems out there, but we're going with that system, which is what the state went with, what all of the surrounding communities went with, so that we can not only continue our interoperability, but expand it. Because the whole theory of interoperability is when the big earthquake hits, or we have the flood, or whatever, that we can get, now, for the most part in the state of Oregon, it's the Portland metro area that sends resources to the rest of the state. But at some point in time, we'll need those resources. And people can come from Seattle and the radio system will work. They can talk on it.
So this is the best choice for the long-term solution?
And this is not necess, this is a standard, not a manufacturer.
Correct.
So we're not dependent on Simplex or Motorola or whoever it is.
No.
Because Motorola's famous for putting out a product and having it obsolete five years later, and you have to buy a new one.
And they, they are one of the vendors, I believe.
Oh, yes. They're, they're primary.
They were in the room when the board was talking about it, it's my understanding.
The good thing was that, if you remember, he mentioned that standards-based communication system, that everybody has to fit whatever this P-25 mold is. That, that, that is a really good piece, I think, because you could get, whether it's Kenwood or whether it's Motorola, they're making that radio and you're not stuck with one. You're not stuck with Sony.
It goes back to the days when it used to be individual departments. Every officer could have a different brand radio and it still worked on the system.
Some departments had four or five brands of radios for the same group of guys. Everybody in a squad would have a different machine. So it could be worse. Kind of saying, John.
But I think, as Mr. Frazier says, it is an issue of education. $50 million is certainly a shock. It's a shock in the communities of Clackamas County. And it's a matter of understanding more about it. I mean, there was one of my strongest opponents when we got all the police chiefs together. It just takes time to really understand what the pieces.
And, and there's the. We spent $1.5 billion for 7.2 miles of railroad. So $50 million in the scheme of things does not seem so expensive.
There we go.
Not on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, John, for being kind enough to come and.
Thanks for coming, John.
Anything else you want to say, Mayor? Bugging you tonight?
I could've swore I was chairing this meeting with. So we're done, oh, now we got one more on here, don't we?
Yeah.
Oh, thank goodness. 15175, draft amendments to the Oregon municipal code, OCMC, Chapter 2.30, Citizen Involvement Committee, Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, Commissioners. So here tonight to just provide an update of where we're at, at the goal setting. There was discussion and I was directed to work on taking the bylaws that existed for the CIC and making it more consistent with other committees that existed within the municipal code. Commissioner Shaw and myself have met with the CIC members to review the bylaws and the proposed code language at their February, March, April, May, and we're going back in June for one, hopefully our last meeting with them in reviewing the proposed language. So the CIC has not come to consensus on this, but there, we appear to be getting very close. Once we have that consensus, we still need to review this one last time by our attorneys. It would then go to the Department of Land Conservation and Development for a review by their committee to make sure it's consistent with statewide planning goal one. And then it would come to the City Commission for eventual consideration for adoption. So within the, I'm just gonna highlight some of what we've done with the code. So it's proposed 2.30, the Citizen Involvement Committee. 2.3010 is why it was created, to foster public participation and education regarding land use for the citizens of Oregon City on behalf of the City Commission and perform other duties that have, as defined, identified within this chapter. You know, their original bylaws had quite a bit more language in there about what they were trying to accomplish, what their goals were. We've tried to really kind of narrow it down a little bit and then, and then work from there. We've outlined their duties. As you can see in the redlined version under 2.30.020, the last one, E, assist with requests from the City Commission. You know, there was concern about perform duties of the City Commission or as directed by the City Commission. I believe the intent is the same through this. In the draft amendment document that you'll have, you'll also notice comments from the CIC that are below each one of those sections. So we as staff have tried to implement the, what I heard from the Commission at our, at our retreat, as well as meet some of the concerns and ideas that the CIC had brought forward. Some things weren't in there. You know, some want more information, more responsibilities, more roles identified. But trying to fulfill both goals of the CIC members as well as the Commission, what we're trying to achieve, and I think we're getting close to that product. On 2.30.030, under membership, one of the issues that comes up is, most of the neighborhood associations have two members who attend the meetings. Some of them only are able to identify one member who's willing or able to attend those meetings. So what we've compromised with was that the neighborhood association would identify a primary member and an alternate member. Only the primary member would vote, although the alternate could attend, sit at the table, be part of the conversation. If the primary member is absent, much like many other committees, the alternate would step in and fill that role. You know, the idea is public participation. And if you have citizen volunteers, I understand why they want to be at the table and a part of the conversation. As far as the voting, there are actually instances where two representatives from the same neighborhood association would vote opposite on, on an issue. And so it raises the issue of is that neighborhood association being represented? So this was the compromise that we, that we were, that we are proposing at this point. Part B concerning membership. There was a lot of concern about how someone is appointed to the CIC committee. And, you know, there's this push and pull between we represent the citizens and the neighborhood association versus we're a part of the city and instrumentality of the city as one of those committees that's set up. All of our other committees, Planning Commission, Historic Review Board, Library Board, a recommendation comes forward, usually through an application process to the city. It's vetted, whether it be interviews with the board of which the applicant is applying for. A recommendation goes forward, and then the mayor makes a decision whether to appoint or not. So what we've come up with here is that each neighborhood association shall provide member nominations for appointment by the mayor. So the neighborhood associations would vet their members, who wants to be on the CIC, who do we want on the CIC? That would come forward to the mayor for an up or down vote. I know there were concerns on this issue, so. And I guess I, would you like me to go through everything and we can come back for questions? Or you just want to bring them up as you come along? And Commissioner Shaw, please feel free to interject if I'm missing anything or a different view.
No, no, fine.
Okay, thanks.
Moving on.
Thank you. The other ish, the other item that was brought up is D in that subsection, that members shall reside, work in, own property or own a business within the neighborhood association boundaries, which they represent. Some members wanted the membership limited to residents only versus businesses, business owners and residents. So that is one sticking issue. Right now, we've kept the language to include, be the more inclusive of those two options.
It seems to me that, as I recall that particular argument, that the, if this is supposed to be the Citizen Involvement Committee, we should take the widest interpretation of the word citizen, meaning that, I believe that Betty is a citizen of Camby when she is operating her business there. So if somebody has a business inside a neighborhood, I think they should have as much standing as someone who lives there. That's my interpretation.
And I think some of the, and I'm not advocating a position here, we're bringing forth this, a policy decision on behalf of the Commission. What we heard was businesses have alternative methods, whether it be Chamber of Commerce that are, that are related to businesses for their representation. And that is, and if this is truly for the citizens of the city, they should live in the city of which they're making decisions in. So, you know, those are the two things we're trying to weigh when we were looking at this issue.
I think you always have to think about the extremes too, Mayor, because if, if it were such a situation where you had men, the whole committee could be comprised of business owners and there wouldn't be any residents, I think that would be problematic. And so I think you'd want to really be careful about.
I think that would be.
Unlikely?
Extremely unlikely. And, and two, if we're talking about, you know, transparency and inclusivity and all of that sort of thing, what is the harm in having more voices rather than fewer voices?
And I think, two comments on that. One is, we have an interesting, well, it's great that we have Two Rivers Neighborhood Association has been established downtown. But we have very, very limited people who live in our downtown. So you would have, and Two Rivers brought this up, that a majority of our folks are folks who worked, lived our own businesses down there, are part of that neighborhood association. And so, and I forgot where I was going. A second, let's have to wait for that and come back to me. But, oh, the other part of this is that this is allowing someone to be put on the CIC as a member. But remember, the neighborhood association actually has to put that person forward.
Right.
So you have this double vetting process. If a neighborhood association, if someone who owns a business is in the neighborhood association, says, "I want to be on the CIC," and someone else lives there as a resident, it's up to the neighbors to decide who they want to put forward. So this is allowing something, but there still is that local control.
I want to point out one part of this, and that is under the staffing subsection B.
Where.
Under, where it says city liaison, commissioner liaison. Under the city liaison portion, you, you may recall, last year, we had an incident on the CIC where our staffing levels were reduced temporarily because we had an employee who was ill. And then after that, there was a long investigation about a complaint that turned out to be unfounded. And I suppose, when I look at paragraph two, I think it, there should be a sentence added that the city manager shall retain the discretion to suspend staffing at the CIC under extraordinary circumstances. That's what we had in that case, that were some pretty extraordinary circumstances. I do believe I found someone, or someone volunteered, or both. But I do think that it'd be, it'd be wise for me, because of the liability the city potentially faces, to retain discretion to assign staffing there or not whenever there's a problem. So did, was the Commission support that? Any Commissioners?
Don't everybody speak at once.
I don't have a problem with that.
I think it, I think that's okay. Yeah.
Fine.
Okay. Let's see, jump back real quick. So, okay, so Mr. Frazier was talking, 2.30.040. One of the concerns raised was the terms. Two years versus four years, you know, it's just difficult with volunteers, and then there's a, there's a two-term max. You know, one of the goals is to get the citizenry involved. I'm comfortable with the two years at this point. If we had to revisit it, we could, if we did have issues. Just four years is a long time. But we do do it for Historic Review Board, Planning Commission, in, in those terms.
And occasionally, we have to fill somebody's place midterm.
We do, yeah. And then, in.
So were they arguing for longer terms?
Yes, because there was a concern of just getting folks to volunteer. That it's hard to, some, some of these folks have been doing it quite a while because other citizens don't want to take on that responsibility and that role and what happens. And, you know, one part, I can certainly understand extending those roles. But the second part of that is, you know, it maybe could force the hand of other peoples to become involved. I mean, and, you know, how do we do that? And what happens if someone doesn't? We'll have to address that, whether it gets absorbed by the CIC themselves or absorbed into another neighborhood association. But to just rely on one person for four, or five, six years isn't necessarily fair to that person either, but.
So I think it was, go ahead, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think that it was for a two-year term, but they could re-up. It's not like you're, you're out.
Right.
You know, you can re-up, the same person could still do it two years, two years, two years, if they, if that's what the neighborhood suggests.
But wasn't there a term limit in there somewhere?
Yeah. The chairperson or vice-chair may not serve more than two consecutive terms. So essentially, they could get four.
Well, if you want to go to four years, I'd say two terms. If you're gonna stay at two years, I'd say three terms. So six years total or eight years total. But I don't like the idea of anybody, including myself, being in the same spot for more than eight years.
So right now, the way we have it is it's every two year, you have two years. You have to go through the nomination and process again. And if, if I was successful, I could have two more years, so I could have a total of four. And then someone else would have to be the, the vice or the chair of the CIC.
So there's no limitation to the, you're saying there's no limitation to the representatives from the neighborhoods themselves?
Correct. Right, so it was more the, I'm sorry, it was more the chair and the vice-chair of the CIC itself.
But I'm fine with, with two terms.
Okay, sorry about that.
With two-year terms.
Two terms of two years to be either the chair or the vice-chair or a combination thereof?
We just say the chair, the chairperson or vice-chair may not serve more than two consecutive terms.
Okay, so I think we need to clarify that.
Okay.
Much like, much like the mayor and the commission. So for the purposes of this, vice-chair and chair are the same position.
Okay.
So you can't serve more than four years combined in either of those two positions.
Consecutively.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this that was?
Yep, just once, I just wanted to check one thing real quick. Yeah, so essentially, as for membership to the CIC from each of the neighborhood associations, that has to be renewed every two years, so.
But the same person could hold that seat for 10 years.
Correct.
Okay.
In that same section, 2.30.040, sub B, number one, the city commissioner liaison? One liaison from the city commission shall or may be appointed to act as a resource to CIC and attend CIC meetings. The CIC was hoping for clarification from the Commission, whether this is a, if there, if it's something that shall be filled or if it may. Keep it at may.
May.
Yeah, because we don't know what the next mayor is gonna want to do and stuff, so.
And. Never mind.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm really hoping that the, that the CIC fills an obligation to come and report to us and that they work with us and they come to us instead of, you know, us. I mean, it's great to go to them as well, but hopefully they will see that we are working together and they will, they will come and advise us like our other committees do.
And that, that was brought up, Commissioner Pauley, that, because I was at one of those. And that was brought up, Commissioner Pauli, that, because I was at one of the Commission meetings here before I was on board here, and I remember Mike came up and gave a presentation from PrAC about all the projects and stuff they've been doing and things, that was pretty good. So, that's what I would expect from CIC also, to come to Commission and say, "This is what we've been doing," so.
And then, we're all in one spot, and they can get us all at one time. It makes sense to me.
Okay.
On the 2.30.050 organizational procedures, really nothing in there, it just lays out when we're going to meet, what's a quorum.
I thought we'd gone to every other month.
That's-
They meet every month.
I've agreed to, if, I believe that we can staff this between myself, the staff member working on this, and John Lewis has actually been quite helpful in this, in providing this through the public education component.
Is there enough, is there enough to do to have a meeting like this every month?
We hope there will be, that we can put together a public participation plan and continuing with the educational outreach, those opportunities, you know, it's something we can revisit.
Okay, then, I would say, I would like to have some consensus here, but I say we do this for six months and then we revisit it and see if that's working, because we're talking about taking staff people who are on salary and, you know, giving them another meeting a month. And if it's, you know, if it's not really creating information or creating a pathway of communication or getting stuff done, I don't see the usefulness of spending that money. So, can we look at it again in six months after, six months after this has been established and then starts working?
Well, I've kind of come to a decision myself already, just having been on this. You know, we came at this, I looked at a few things that I wanted to kind of oversee, kind of look at as I was sitting in on these CIC meetings, and obviously, in the beginning, it seemed like there was a lot of people here. You know, there's 24, there's 12 neighborhood associations, so there's 24 people in this room.
Plus staff.
Plus staff. And as a former chairperson of committees and stuff, I always thought that was a bit much, but I wasn't the chairman. So, after watching and going to the CIC meetings, I, that doesn't really concern me so much anymore. If it concerns anybody, it'd be the chairperson, because she's the one, or he or she, is the one that has to monitor that many people. So, I'm not too concerned about that, but I would suggest going to every other month, unless something special came up that needed some attention, that we could call a meeting. But I, I really haven't seen anything yet anyway that really deserves that we'd have to, that the CIC has to meet every month, so, that's just my observation so far.
And I guess, you know, I think in, part of what we're trying to do in community development and staffing this is utilizing the CIC more effectively as a vehicle to communicate with the neighborhoods. And a lot happens here in a month, let alone two months, of information that we can provide. We start things and finish things within two months that could impact neighborhoods. You know, we put out a call to all the departments. We don't ask them unless it's something special, or if they'd like to come present to the CIC, we take that information and relay it with contact information. So, there are, there could be benefits if we utilize this more than we have in the past. But, once again, it's your discretion is the decision.
I haven't heard from either Commissioner Smith or Commissioner Pauli.
Well, as far as the history of the CIC, haven't they met every month?
Correct.
Yes.
So, that's what they're used to, and I'm a little worried about a backlash if we go to every other month. We want to make sure to facilitate participation, citizen participation. And I realize that it is a staffing issue, and we have to be cognizant of that as well, but I do want to make sure that we put the best faith effort into really getting citizen participation and making sure that we have a vehicle for that.
I think one of the biggest things I heard was just the ability as volunteers, some of them with, who do a lot of work, to be able to talk, hear from other neighborhoods what they're doing, what they're doing successfully, what hasn't worked. It's really, they see it as a benefit to them as volunteers. I guess it'd be different if I was forcing them to be there, right? But they're coming to try and understand, learn, bring information back, bring information to us. So, I guess that's, I just wanted to convey what I was hearing from a lot of the members of why they wanted monthly still.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I think if it's useful and it's successful every month, then that's great. If it were, if it becomes, you know, a situation where it's not beneficial to have staff there, then I think we have to address that. But, so, I'm okay with looking at it in six months, or just seeing, you know, how it goes, or-
What if we had Commissioner Shaw and myself provide an update?
Yeah, that'd be, that's fine.
On how we thought it was going after six or nine months, you know, give us a little bit of time.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
I want to offer something about, because you're trying to talk about language too that reflects the will of the Commission and the group, the CIC. What if you drafted the language so as to permit, so it would say this CIC may meet monthly, but may also meet less every other month, depending, you know, if the workload justifies less frequent meetings as determined by the group, by the committee? And that way, there's some, they're not locked in, but they can certainly meet monthly.
As determined by the Commission, not by the committee.
Okay.
I guess.
Yeah, and that's sort of retained anyway, that discretion, but at least you wouldn't have to change the code, perhaps, but.
Well, I'm not sure the Commission's going to know what they are, what they need to meet or not, how are we going to know that? CIC is the one that's going to know whether they need that extra meeting or not, so, I would suggest, like Tony's talking about, is that let's revisit it in six months, and we'll kind of keep it on, see how we do, so.
Let's just say that we're going to, that you're going to give us a report the first meeting in December.
Okay.
We've got a date certain that gives us, you know, seven or eight months to kind of feel what's going on, and then we'll make a decision when, I mean, changing that one little piece in the, in the code is not, you know, horrendously time-crunching.
Right.
Is there anything else on this, Tony?
The only thing I wanted to call out was under the grievance section. So, the CIC would handle neighborhood association grievances, similar to what we saw in Kenema. We added subsection E, the CIC decision is final unless called up for review by the City Commission. Just wanted to point out that we are going to allow the CIC to make the final call here. It's not like Planning Commission where they make a recommendation to the City Commission unless that's what you'd like to see. But it does give you the ability, once you know of the decision, if you want to call it up, you could do so, rather than having them, like a Planning Commission make a recommendation to you and then you have to hear this all thing again. But I'll leave that to your discretion.
Do we need to put some language in there that, I know we say the CIC decision is final, do we add "and not appealable" to the City Commission, just to reinforce the fact? Because somebody will go, "Well, it's final, but I'm going to go to the City Commission."
Well, that hasn't been a problem. That hasn't happened here in the past, has it? Not that I know of.
Well, seems like the Park Place thing got appealed to the City Commission.
The Commission said, basically, "Go work it out."
Go work it out.
Talk amongst yourselves, yeah.
It did come.
All right, I'm fine.
I'm open, it's the Commission.
Is that it?
That is all that I have.
Good work, you guys.
Thanks.
There's a lot to go through.
So, any other comments on that agenda item? Hearing them, we'll move on. Before the manager does this, I have signed up to go to the U.S. Conference of Mayors Conference at the end of June in San Francisco, so there'll be some cost out of our budget to cover that expense. If anybody has an issue now would be the time to-
Sounds like a Motel Six kind of deal to me.
I have to sign off on those costs, and so, it's important that the Commission reach a consensus that it's appropriate expenditure.
And then, also, I went to the county and got one of the certified copy of the plot map of San Francisco, and we're having it framed, we're having it framed, and I'm going to, and a little plaque on it that says, "To Mayor Edwin Lee from, Mayor of San Francisco from Dan Holliday, Mayor of Oregon City."
Very cool.
Sent to him at the conference.
Great.
Just a copy.
Fun.
He's not getting it originally, tried a couple times now.
Certified copy, though, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cool. That's it for me. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind the Commission again that I will be out of the country May 14th to the 27th. And the first week that I'm gone, May 14th to the 21st, Tony Conkle will be your acting city manager. And the second week, 27th, or 22nd through the 27th, Scott Archer will be, will be acting city manager. I will have email, I'm told by Verizon, I have an email communication set up on my iPad, so I should be able to get emergency phone calls and emails, but I know from traveling abroad, sometimes that system doesn't work very well, so, but I'm supposed to have those things, so if you do need to get ahold of me, they will know how to do that.
Well, my instruction to at least the City Commission is, is that David's on vacation, and he needs to be on vacation, so we're not going to call him unless, you know, half the city is burning down, or, you know, there's something else going on.
Well, we have executive staff, so.
Last time I was out of the country, last time I was out of the country, I got a call from, a text from Commissioner Smith in Tokyo, and it was during the loss of our officer, so I really have my fingers crossed.
Well, I get that.
It's kind of stressful, yeah. But I'll be paying attention, not a lot of attention, but I will be checking that, you know, probably every other day or so.
Okay.
Let's see here. Also, I wanted to report that as of today, there have been two applications received for the vacant City Commission position number four, and that is Stephen Van Handerbeek and Robert Mahoney. The deadline to apply is 5:00 PM on Thursday, May 21st. And I believe that's all we have this evening. Any staff have anything?
Anything for the order? Then we're adjourned.